Okay, welcome everybody to call the meeting to order. This is the study session where we are covering the board operations B and R policies as well as our legislative priorities. I think we'll start with the Bs and Rs. We have in the room Directors Cast, Kogan, Hayes, and Swain, and McGurty, Superintendent Tully, Deputy Superintendent Bergy, and our intrepid Peggy King, and I'm sorry, not going to get your name.
David.
David.
Arthur.
David, gotcha, David. Okay, so why don't we just kind of jump in? What we'll do is go through, starting with the Bs unless anybody has a better plan, and anyone can just jump in with any potential edits or changes to each policy as we go through. Okay, so starting with B1. What do I hear? Anything? Hang on, I gotta get my notes called up here. You know I will. Not commas, I promise I won't talk about commas.
It is.
Yep.
It's all as it is.
Yep. I had one small suggestion on B1. If I can find it. Oh, there you go. Says we will always treat each other with respect. Do we want to add the community in there? Each other and the community? Or is this strictly about how the board interacts with each other? This is board commitment and governance approach.
Yeah. I would say that's really us.
Director Cast, do you want to refresh our memory of what exactly the Bs are and a little context for treatment?
So, okay, so the policies structure with that that we adopted for policy governance is there's categories of policies. So the B policies are board structure and process. So in the little box there, that's the category of the policy section. So B is just a little abbreviation. At the beginning of each policy section, there's a little summary of kind of the world to kick it off. Like for the parameters, it's the general executive constraint, which is kind of kicks off some big bumpers. Same thing with Bs, same thing with Rs. So this B1 is meant to be kind of the big, you know, and so overarching, the idea being that if you don't think of a detail within here, the first policy will hopefully kind of cover it in a categorical way. So, you know, I don't think this has to be strictly about governance. I mean, it's about how the board exercises its roles and responsibilities. So it's, I think, a fair question to ask if we want to put the community in there treating not only each other but the community with respect.
Do I hear any serious objections to that?
No.
I mean, some of it, I view this policy as sort of, as you said, a generic sort of umbrella policy of how we're going to conduct our work. And I think, you know, one of the things we're focusing on with respect to our goals for the year is better communication and interaction with the community. So I thought it would be nice to add something in there.
Add that staff and community if we're going to expand it.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking of the global district community, but yeah, we could do that.
And then when do we ask students too?
What about the, we'll treat each other and the North Shore community? Does North Shore community encompass everybody? Staff, students, community?
All members of the North Shore community.
All members of the North Shore. There you go, again with the idea of being very global.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you have a line down there that says, well, responsive to the needs of our students, families, staff, and task editors.
Right. An ongoing engagement with the community.
Yeah, you could put, we will always be respectful, respectfully responsive. I mean, you could put it anywhere.
I think all members of the North Shore community sounds great.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
And that's in the third we.
It's the third line.
Yeah. I will, I will send you my notes too.
Oh.
All right.
Okay.
Number two.
Number two. Any comments, questions, potential changes on number two? This is the board role description, which I think is, we are pretty constrained with respect to what our role is.
I did think of one again along the desire to have better, more, I mean, the word meaningful is in the first point, but around community engagement, linkages is language, not just in policy governance, but talks about that, there's, I think the idea is that it's supposed to be two-way, but I don't know if it's really called out. I was thinking it might be helpful to add two-way to that. Turns into a laundry list, but it does focus on the work we identified we want to do. So it would be meaningful, transparent, comma, two-way, and proactive linkages.
This is the first bullet.
The first bullet.
Meaningful, transparent. Sorry, let me see.
After transparent, comma, two-way.
Two-way.
More fancier word than that, but.
Okay.
Is the, um, is the use or following of policy governance memorialized in any of this? Or is it just something you, when you started, you just said, okay, this is what we're going to do? I mean, is it?
I think we adopted a resolution.
Does it have a resolution? Okay, so that's kind of.
Doing policy governance.
Does that need to be noted or referred to in one of these? Just thinking of the future, like if a board decided to go rogue and start doing whatever they wanted to do, there'd be something that says, you can't unless you vote to change to move from a policy governance structure to something else.
Well, strictly defined here, the second bullet, determine and adopt policies. So if we adopt policies and underneath there is the third and fourth, right, the board structure and process, which is the Bs, and then the board superintendent relationship, which is the Rs. Like we have said, we're going to adopt them. So if we adopt them, they're binding on us as well because it calls us out. And then, a little circular logic, I guess, but.
But that is sort of the definition of policy governance. We determine and adopt policies to govern.
Well, and that, that we've, we've, we are specifically adopting this category of policies and therefore we're bound.
That'd be full, that covers it.
It could always be rescinded with a popular vote, another motion.
Yeah, they know that a board could rescind, yeah, it's true.
Or they just don't follow it. That's what we typically see is they just stop doing it.
That's true.
Well, which is one reason to review them, even if you don't edit them every year, like if you don't, as a practice, sit down and read them together, then do you really stick with it?
You know, if you wanted to put something in B1, the board commitment and governance approach would be the place to put it. We want to call it out specifically that we are doing policy.
Board operating with the structure of policy governance. We want to describe it.
We technically did kind of dinker with it.
Yeah.
Because strictly speaking, the parameters would be called executive limitations. There are some things, super, anywhere you see the word superintendent, it would say CEO, right? So we dinkered with it to make it more transparent for our community so they would kind of understand it, and it's a little less wonky. So is it trademarked policy governance? Probably not.
Yeah, it's a general term.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're good leaving it as is?
I mean, yeah, I'm sure in the background.
In fact, I think the Bs were supposed to be called board roles. Yeah, we tried to, we tried to, not that it isn't really technical, we tried to make it better.
Okay, the 2.1, individual board member role. I don't think this is another one where it's, we're pretty, quite limited, but it's spelled out for us what we will do. Going, going, gone. B2.2, school board election qualifications and terms of office. Another one that is legally defined for us. B2.3, board officers. Is this one also legally spelled out for us?
Except for, I think, the auditor, I think we've North Shore-ized that one, the audit committee, but the rest of them are in the RCW.
Did we want to change that?
I thought we did.
Did we pull it out? B2.2?
Actually, I had that highlighted too, just to ask about that.
Yeah, we could change that.
The audit committee designate?
We talked about it, I don't know whether we actually do it.
Yeah, and we had language, and I sent it, and we voted on it, and it all got changed. Yeah, it was a magic notebook, it was.
Yeah, note.
Yeah, I didn't remember it.
Yeah, so when we talked to, when I talked to Juan and Tim, he just said, no, your districts have a committee. You are, you're by de facto the committee because of you, everybody signs.
Right.
The bills, right? So by de facto, you're the committee. You don't have to have another person. I mean, you can have someone that Bert, either designated or something, but you don't need to.
Yeah, yeah.
Because everybody should be looking at that.
It begs the question, what's the value of having that position?
Yeah, I think that's, that's what the discussion was. What is the audit designate do?
I just threw that away because I thought, oh, we're done, we voted on that, it's all better now.
Well, it would just be a removal.
I don't think it was a removal.
No, it wasn't, we didn't remove it. We added quarterly meetings with the CFO and.
We enhanced it.
Yeah, we enhanced it and gave it.
Structure.
So it wasn't.
I thought we were going to have a meeting with the CEO and the superintendent, but it never happened.
Well, that.
So to discuss, to discuss the role potentially.
We did, we did meet with Tracy and you and I and Dr. Reed.
Oh, that was a while back.
Yeah, and we said, and we put it together, and then we wrote it up, and I think we voted, I don't know.
Yeah, but then I talked, I talked to Tim like after Dr. Reed was gone.
Yeah.
And he, that's why I said, you don't need a committee, there shouldn't be a committee.
Right, it's a committee of one.
But there shouldn't even be a committee of one, so it's not even an RCW, you don't need to have it.
Well, there, again, I just throw all this stuff away. I found the RCW that talks about this audit committee in school boards with zero.
Yeah.
Clarification.
Clarification of what it does.
So it does exist, it just doesn't say what it, in RCW, what it does.
Right.
Well, what Tim was saying is that the board is the committee, that he said in all our districts he's ever worked in, that the board is just by de facto the committee.
Because you signed the warrant.
Because you signed the warrant. So if one person signed the warrant, then that would be different, but, so you don't have to have a person of one.
Unless you want to. So it dates back to, I have no idea, it's been in existence forever in North Shore. And the issue we were trying to, the problem we were trying to solve was that sometimes you get board members come and they're going to be the audit committee, and then they go way into the weeds of the work. And we were trying to give it a healthier structure to the title. We could certainly get rid of it. I think that's an option too.
Unless we, or adjust it so that the language says that the entire board is the audit committee, and that's what I would do.
You can refer to the RCW and just say that the entire board is the committee. What the committee does is that's a whole nother discussion that we still haven't done, right?
It's what we do review, all the warrants.
We do the.
Yeah, remember the warrants was the, we've all done it, the warrants are the warrants, and we have no idea really what's there, and we ask staff, and they say, oh, that was for toilet paper, and okay, fine, you know, and that's the extent of it. It seems to be, so we, I think you still have to, should be some, that's not an audit, it's not an audit, it's like throwing a dart at a board and picking out one, I had line item really, that's, right? It's kind of a.
Let's review, so I look at the charges, I look at the companies, I look at the names of the employees, and if I see anything that's unusual, then I ask a policy question, I've done that, and then when I get the answer, then I'm like, okay, that makes sense. So I do feel like there is an auditing component to it.
I did find a weird thing when I was the audit committee, that a athletic director who's no longer with us was getting cash every Friday to have on hand for football games. And that was just, right, yeah, so, I mean, that was, things like that, yeah. Who is he giving the cash to? For the, for the change box, the change box. Yeah, so, yeah, so that was something, yeah, that popped up, so.
But that was probably random, randomly.
No, I'm like, why? Because I know who it was. Why is this a point of getting cash every Friday?
We had a huge list of like teacher reimbursements for expenditures and some hundreds of people and everything. I think what we left at, Jolene, is that we were hoping that the software, which we talked about, hey, can the software and the reports have a one line that just says, this is for, obviously it's special ed student, but the software wouldn't allow us to have that, so we could kind of not waste staff's time either by saying, what's, what's this, this, and this.
Well, we did get some of that, right.
Yeah, there's categories.
Yeah, there's a category.
Oh, categories.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't go into a lot of detail, we don't need or want that kind of detail. Um, the, didn't the, the audit person.
B2.3. B2.3, B2 dot three.
Responsible for going into, I guess, a deeper dive than what, you know, the rest of us would do every two weeks, and then also attending the audit meetings with the , um, audit of the, of the books.
Yeah, that's true for the, you know, state audit, which.
And that's, you know, reasonably.
That's a role.
That's a role.
Straightforward.
Any more suggestions?
Please.
Maybe another bullet that just set, or add on to that last bullet, the audit committee designate term is one year, comma, if there is not an audit committee designee, the entirety of the board is considered.
Audit committee?
I think in, what we've been saying is that the entire board is the audit committee.
I think you just need to put it in there, right?
If there's not a committee that is, a subcommittee that is formed, then by default, it becomes the entire board.
I'd rather find what Sandy can research and then go from there.
Right.
But not right now, not right now, like we can find it.
I mean, I would, I would call it just the audit committee, and it just states that the board is the audit committee.
And take off designate.
Just take off designate, and then there's no.
And then just say that the board serves as the audit committee.
Per, blah, 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 and then.
Maybe put something in there that annually, one member of the board will serve on, see, I think of audit committee, and I'm thinking of the folks who do the audit, you know, who we do that, but if we can say one member of the board is going to be responsible for being involved with the audit meetings, which I think the, our position.
But is that in practice? Have we done that in practice? So if it's.
I don't think I've had that position in practice.
I think that, I mean, the president usually goes, and I think the president should probably invite at least one of the board members, whoever is invited. I don't think it has to be a designate, but that's.
Found it?
Got it? Found it, so. So it's an email sent on September 9th of last fall, so 2022, from Peggy to all of us, says, on behalf of President McGurty, please see attached draft update pertaining to the audit committee from Tuesday night's study session, I'll put a copy in the Friday brief. Um, so we, yeah, I'm so happy it's signed.
That we actually did that.
Yes, yes.
So the audit committee is largely undefined position created by the state legislature in RCW 28A330.090 that states, all accounts shall be audited by a committee of board members chosen in such a matter as the board so determines to be styled the auditing committee. So that's the RCW, um, wow, okay, blah, 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 blah. The designate will review the audit from the state auditor's office and monitor progress on resolving any issues. In addition, the audit committee designate will have quarterly meetings with the superintendent and the chief financial officer to hear any potential changes to the budget and planning for the next year's budget. The designate will then report back to the board at the next quarterly scheduled board meeting. And above all, the audit committee designate will work with the board and superintendent to create trust, so the open communication will happen again, problem solving, some past problems. So we, we did this work a year ago, and I don't know whether we voted on changing it, but this was not the work we did last year.
We're supposed to reply to that email probably.
Probably just after we went through the Bs.
Yeah, that's exactly what this was, so.
And then we started hiring superintendent.
And then we started hiring.
So what date is that email directory?
September, Thursday, September 29th, 2022, at 11:46 a.m. You sent that to all of us?
We can respond to it right now. I mean, I would, just when you read that back, I mean, what do you folks think? Because, I mean, our current superintendent, past superintendent, it's very much a open book, kind of sharing with the entire board, a two-by-twos about the budget process. I'd hate to, I'd hate to get in the way of that by, okay, now there's a committee, there's a person that has to go talk to the superintendent first and then report to the board. It's just so much more efficient, I think, as a committee.
Yeah, and it depends on what the problem is we're trying to solve here, because we have had board members in the past, and there's no guarantee we won't again, that wanted to be in that mold because they were going to find the fraud or the missing dollars or the whatever, and that was their goal in being the audit committee. And so the intentionality was just kind of put some bumpers around the position, have it have clear tasks due. So we can either revise that, bring that back, we can turn this into for all the audit committee and call it good.
That is more of a safeguard than having one person being, you know, a person that maybe you don't want to be the audit committee person, right?
So what we could do, we could say the entire board is the audit committee and the kind of the principles behind it, you know, building trust and some of that language you have there. We could kind of do both, so that, again, parameters on the role, and yet not have a single, single designate. That would be an option.
I think that would be a good idea.
Well, then do we not want to have a person designated to attend the annual audit activities?
I would say that, maybe we change something, that we're the president of the board and another board member selected by the president shall meet with the audit committee annually or something like that.
Never have.
It would have to do with, I mean, I think it's just good having one other person rather than, doesn't have to always be the same person, is it?
Yeah, yeah. So where did we, where did we land? We're gonna.
So I think we'll have to try out some language, but the idea of finding that email and taking the concepts of how the work is done with the idea that the entire board is the audit committee.
Okay.
And we'll change the word designate and just take that off. So audit committee, the audit committee reviews all bills, first comprised of the board, reviews all bills.
Peggy, I went and forwarded an email to you.
Okay, I was just looking at, thank you.
So you don't have to find it. And then you can send it to students, please.
And then that term, one year, we don't need that anywhere.
We don't need that, yeah. I could, let's actually remember to vote on it and be done with it.
My God.
Agenda for the next four meetings.
We revised these all.
Peggy, you got that? Agenda item.
We'll be back in a year.
Yes, what did we do? What, what did this?
Two years ago.
Well, any, any of these changes will have to go on.
Calling or sending emails?
Just put them in, make consent agenda for the most part. Okay, all right. B3, board code of conduct. Pretty straightforward, I think.
And then very mixed and long.
Yes, yes. Okay, going, going. B3.1, conflict of interest, also straightforward.
Put a law.
You have two board members, who are married just now.
What if one of them's on the audit committee?
Okay, B3.2, process for addressing board member violations of policy. RCW's upfront, I don't know that we can change anything.
We have work to do that, so, yeah.
Okay. Going.
We have a lot of experience.
B4, policy, or board advisory committee principles.
Another good one.
Yeah.
Work group, a study group.
Yep.
Focus group.
I don't know why I have this marked.
Why is it recommended? When needed?
See, because this was, this was a big change for us, because within policy governance, you don't have as much interaction with committees that you do in traditional governance. So this one, we, we did chart quite a bit, like there would be times that there's a board committee, and if so, this is exactly what the board does, otherwise. It, it was very muddled, other, of the lot.
We had tons of committees and board members who were going to meetings and like that.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, it was very different.
I know why this is flagged. The, the vice president for designate will provide oversight on behalf of the board.
I'll go.
Does the vice president do this?
That was the past practice, because they would appoint who the members were.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and again, I think we've had a board advisory committee since.
Superintendent advisor.
Okay. Going, going. B5, board monitoring and self-assessment, which I think we're all very familiar with right now, also somewhat embedded for us.
And the ongoing self-assessment in this one, we've never really done, it was a mechanism that if we wanted to kind of build the, so what is it, attendance at meetings, preparation for meetings, adhering to policy, if we needed a, a way to kind of build practice, but we've not had to do that.
So it says, ongoing self-assessment as opposed to, I mean, we do a self-assessment and, but.
But if.
But if it's once every 12 months, that's still just annual.
So it's minimal.
Right, so the idea that it's not just, you know, the was just annual self-assessment, but again, you know, do we want to have a conversation about preparing for meetings? Do we want to have a conversation about, I don't know, like sometimes, you know, the board's spokesperson role, the board president gets a little gray, like if there's any, like anything about how we operate as a board together, if we need to have a self-assessment on that.
Maybe a good timing, when it says once a year, is to do it around this cycle of election. Every two years when there's a potentially new board member, that might be a good time annually to kind of go through this.
I was just thinking the same thing, particularly since we have two people coming on, two new people. We can all sit down together and talk about how we function, and then follow it up at the end of next year.
Yeah, just haven't really done that.
Yeah. Well, we'll presume that we're not going to need to.
But the mechanism is already designed. Ever, if the consensus of the board is that we need to do that.
Okay. Going, going. B6, annual agenda and strategic planning cycle.
It's the board calendar.
It's a board calendar, yeah. Okay, B7, board meetings, agenda setting, meeting conduct, and order of business.
RCW.
Yeah, also very straightforward. We go through this every meeting. B7.1, board meeting schedule and meeting types, which is largely definitions.
RCW.
Let's see.
The lawyers helped write that one.
There was something I, where'd it go? B5, I should look at my notes more. Oh, the board will evaluate its own performance once a year using research, this is B5, I'm sorry.
You're back at five?
Yeah, the assessment will be conducted in May of each year.
Yep.
Do we do them in May?
We, pre-pandemic, there was the, the three, four retreats, end of January, end of March, end of May, the end of May was superintendent evaluation and board self-assessment.
That's true.
Then there was a pandemic, and then it got off. So we can create a retreat at the end of May and put all of that on there, and. We made one, so.
And this year is a good reason why, because we identify, right, we have our little action list, and having this before the board calendar is designed is really helpful, that's why May is a good time to do it.
Yeah.
But.
Well, that was the question, do we want to go back to doing it in May or just take the timing out of there altogether? That's a little too free-form, I think, if we don't have it designated.
I think you can go either way.
Yeah.
There might be benefits of taking it out in case, perhaps, a God happens.
I would.
Right?
Oh, it also says that we will do our monitoring of board compliance and achievement of policies during the regular business meeting. Is the study session defined as a?
No, it's not.
I don't think so. Because that's, that's what we're doing now, right?
We do review them all through. We do review and monitoring business meetings, even the goals, the presentations are made, we vote on it in an open meeting, right?
The B's and O's?
So, no, I think this, that's talking about more the self-assessment, the was just self-assessment and improving community engagement.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, we don't quite do it that way, do we?
No. Excuse me. Well, we could just take out that last sentence.
I think on both bullets, can we take out the last sentences? Both bullets, they just might be too restrictive.
So the assessment will be conducted in May of each year and this review will occur during the regular business meeting?
No, or the areas will be documented in the minutes of the meeting, or I might be looking at the wrong one. So the, okay, so under annual self-assessment, if I'm in the same place, the assessment will be conducted in May of each year, that one out, and then the bullet right below that, so the areas will be documented in the minutes of the meeting, because we don't typically do really detailed minutes for study sessions and retreats?
Well, we are recorded, right?
But they're not in the official minutes. So I think that sentence, maybe we strike as well, if y'all think. And then, yeah, that, and then that whole thing at the bottom.
I mean, we are reviewing them now.
Right.
So we just have to strike that it happens during a regular business meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
And then we're doing it annually.
It has to occur during a meeting, so if the assumption, so we'll take out that last sentence.
Yes.
And then with respect to the results of the annual assessment, do you want to just take out documenting in the minutes?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Very good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Now we're back in compliance.
All right.
I don't think we can, unless we want to change the meeting schedule paragraph, that's really all in there, we can change, because otherwise it's the open public meetings.
Yeah, right. Oh, one question that I thought I'd throw out there, sorry.
It's going to stick your Friday night...
I had...
Make everyone happy.
Oh, no, there was just something about in here, and I don't remember where it was right now, but the meetings being accessible to everyone, and I think we had discussed this once before long ago, about every once in a while, hold a board meeting somewhere else in the district, you know, with the assumption that people have a hard time getting to board meetings, and perhaps that would make it more accessible to some people, just a thought.
And I remember the pushback is always about recording.
Am I true?
That's true, that's true.
That's how they're really getting there, they're on live stream.
That's true.
Yeah.
My only thing is that, I mean, I've brought this up before, but I'm not going to be here, but the four o'clock, it doesn't seem to really make sense, because no one shows up for it and no one watches it online, because it's four o'clock. So if you wanted more people to work, you would move it to six or something.
I hear both.
But they don't, but no one shows for four o'clock.
Oh, they do.
Oh, yeah.
Online. And they show up online, yeah, we do.
I mean, I can't think of too many four o'clock meetings where there's been anybody sitting those chairs in the last six years, except for big topics.
Yeah.
Except for like a big controversial thing.
That's true for the seven PM as well, and, yeah, it goes, this, again, for the catch every day.
We've had it over here, yeah.
And we, there are people that love the four o'clock and there are people that love the seven o'clock and...
Oh, shit, I can't think of everybody happy. Well, the other thing is just personally, I mean, if you're working, it's a tough one. So if you have new board members that are working and they can't get off until five o'clock, then, you know, four o'clock, that's probably a bigger thing.
That's another point, I think, that, that public accessibility now that everything's recorded, I think, yeah, in terms of board director access, that's a...
And we do have that conversation when we bring new board members on.
Yeah, so you could do that at that time.
It's set for the next year, but we can, as we go into second, for the 24, 25 school year, we can have that conversation with board members. It's, we did the same with school visits.
Yeah, right, right. Okay. That was longer. Seven point two, annual organizational meeting. That's our December meeting, oath of office, organize ourselves into official offices.
I'm going to have to take the audit committee member off, number 11 at the bottom there.
Okay, there it is, there's right there on our thing, how to run that meeting.
That's in the middle there, versus one through 11.
Yeah, we don't... Yeah. We also don't necessarily elect legislative representatives in even numbered years.
It's a two-year...
Two-year term.
Yeah.
But that's going to happen this year.
It is, it's an even number, oh, it's an even number, are we off cycle?
But you're electing, start in January, maybe? So maybe the R or something?
For the term.
For the term of the...
Serve a two-year term.
If you serve a term.
Call for nominations, and, yeah, suppose you could read it.
To serve in an even numbered years. That is awkward, the way that's written, it could go either way.
To serve a two-year term, how about starting even number years? I was completely baffled.
To start the next year.
Because you don't, yeah, you turn the gavel over right away, right?
I don't think it matters, you know, with respect to ledger, but, yeah, because sometimes it could be just one year that they serve.
Yeah, I think that may be, and what happened is somewhere along the way, it was a one-year term.
I think it got off cycle.
I don't think it is, I think the definition is, we have the meeting in December, but the term for the two-year term is even number, starts in January of the even number year 2024. It should be clarified, I think, if we can't figure it out, it's not clear.
Yeah.
Or just take it out.
Yeah, I don't think we need to...
Does that name in the RCW?
Even number years.
I doubt it, that seems pretty specific.
You could just take out in even number years, just take out the parentheses.
Okay.
Oh, and then forgot it, can we have to take out 10 and 11?
10, oh, yes.
So... You know, the only reason why it would be an even number years, would it be synced up with when the legislators are elected, or do you think that even played a role?
I think this was us trying to be clear.
We did a good job.
A two-year term is still a two-year term.
Well, we can leave it with David's interpretation, we'll leave it.
I think just take it out, call for the term is every two years.
Okay, there you go.
So if somebody's in a term, right?
Yeah, okay.
Continue to serve, right?
So get rid of the parenthetical.
I kind of think so, doesn't help.
Doesn't help, obviously.
Even all odd numbered years.
Okay. Seven point two, done. Seven point three, community input at board meetings.
So I would like this one, the public, open public meetings act interpretation changed over the last couple of years. So in terms of the, what is the fourth paragraph, in terms of the role of the board's president in interrupting or terminating an available statement? I think, I think that language now is differently interpreted, I think there is a new was to publication, like, we have to check that one.
Yeah, I think we need to send that to our lawyer. I think the irrelevant one, I don't think we get that.
Because I don't think we can terminate public, I think we have to have public comments in every regular business meeting now.
Yeah, right.
Right? So in terms of this language too, the second sentence of that paragraph, to terminate, yeah, it's like, are you terminating an individual's comment or the entire, yeah, we have to...
We think there needs to be something that the board will, or the president will, what do you call it, facilitate, but...
I think, I think can request, right, I think the only, the only, because of First Amendment interpretations, the only course of action a board president can have is to actually terminate the meeting now, or pause a meeting.
So if a person is going to...
Because it got, because a lot of different examples happen around the states, I think.
I'm thinking about if a person is working.
They did change it.
Because it was an option, public comment, and they changed it to required, right?
Right, and then...
That was the big change.
That was the big one.
That's required.
But how courts were interpreting it to, in terms of First Amendment, how the First Amendment plays with it, that board president can request no personally directed abusive, obscene comments, but can't terminate someone's right to speak because of that. But, yeah, so it got tighter.
No, that, I mean, that's true.
Yeah.
I mean, we, yeah, that's true, you can't cut somebody off just because they started saying such bad things about me.
Right.
Right.
So they can't do it if they're involved in it.
So our instructions about not referring to...
Because we ask.
Yeah, we don't require, we ask that they not do it.
Okay, okay.
Right.
Okay.
We've had board meetings, I've been at board meetings where they disregarded it and we had to let them finish their two minutes, and then that was it.
Two minutes.
Yeah, is it two?
If, yes.
Well, that's where I was going next.
It's, it's only two minutes for a couple of different reasons, it gives more people opportunity, and people, if they can't say it in two minutes versus three minutes, they aren't as able to say it.
Well, maybe they'll cut out some of the...
Just focus.
Yeah, instead of just being derogatory and everything. But we still can set a limit with respect to time, per each individual, so we can cut them off, if they're starting to do 10 minutes, we can...
Yeah, you can say your time's up. You can kind of, you can stop them for time, we can set a limit of total public comment time, but yes, the...
We have to check that language.
We have to check.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing that's germane to this policy is our timer. Our timer doesn't function as a alert that you're out of time, because our thing goes red for three seconds and then it turns to unlimited.
Especially for virtual.
And so, do you know what I'm talking about, Dave? So it's like that counts down, you get the yellow, 30 seconds, and then the red is on for three seconds, and then it goes black, like blank screen, and so people that are reading and that have to glance down for those three seconds, look up, and there's no timer, there's no you're out of time, there's no warning.
So that's actually a board docs.
Yeah.
And we've tried, I contacted them and I, you know, their advice was to pause it at one second, but then it stops anyway, so it's, they actually, so I've been in districts where the person in my position would...
Yep.
There's a timer that...
Sound the timer on the, but they tend to ignore those...
Cut the mic.
Cues as well, yeah, I think.
Red stroke line at the front.
Yeah.
It's rarely a problem, but what you could do is just set the timer on your phone, and then you don't say anything but when it goes off after three minutes.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
You just kind of let it keep going.
That audio reminder.
So we are having legal check on the language. It's back to...
Three minutes is just our, what you've decided to, or it's not in?
No.
I think that's president's discretion, I think, officially.
What's my discretion for what?
Three minute and the hour long, I'll only leave it.
So depending on who steps up to the podium, I could say one minute?
No. It's safe for everyone.
Okay, so we're going to have legal check on the language of that, so let's see, it's the fourth paragraph.
I'm catching.
And, and set a timer.
I think like Washington's like 30 minutes and two, I think.
Is it two minutes for...
It's interesting, some districts, they have multiple opportunities, there's a general one at the beginning, I think it's Esquerra, they do before every action item, they have a specific public comment for every action item.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
We have that option in here, you know? Okay, other things, seven point three. B eight, minutes. This is pretty well conscribed to... Okay. B nine, board member compensation, insurance and expenses.
I think we get to update this one because of our resolution. So instead of if authorized, we have as authorized.
Yes, very good.
And we can get rid of that at a regularly scheduled meeting, right, because, yeah.
Yes, it is.
As authorized board, okay, so that's...
As authorized. And we can collect it, right? Because we're still in the term that we voted on.
Yeah, the resolution was like after...
We already waived ours.
Yeah, yeah, so if and when we run again, we could point to...
As authorized, and we just may receive 50...
But the newly elected ones this fall can collect it.
Right, so I might need to, for two years, have that language in there.
And, and hopefully this isn't a nitpick, can we change all the his, hers to theirs since we're agreeing with this one?
Yes, wow, yeah. Do we have that in everything, in every?
Well, it doesn't show up in many.
They may not increase compensation during their current term.
Oh, there you go.
So at the very last paragraph, I think it covers the current term.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, so I think you're, it's okay for the future.
Okay. Wait, where's that?
The last paragraph on that first page of the policy.
We should probably reference what resolution, whatever the number is.
Okay, so are we going back to as authorized?
Yes.
Okay. And are we adding anything about the resolution or...
Number.
If we could just put as authorized by resolution.
Yeah, I can look it up.
Or the date even would be good with the number.
Yeah.
And then we're getting rid of his, her, right there.
Just do that throughout the whole.
There is a there in the last paragraph, actually, it's just not consistent.
Okay. As authorized, according to board resolution.
That's what I was going to suggest, too. Smart Alex. Keep the word shell in this, do you want to change that to may? The classic.
Changing all gender identifiers to they, them?
They, their, them.
They, they, their.
Or just their, whatever grammatically is the nonspecific. And their authority, that their own cause, yeah.
Okay. Others, B nine. This is one of those we will need to make sure our new members are aware of. Does at least one of them have children, small children?
They all have children.
They all have children. I don't think some of them need a babysitter, or, you know, that you would need...
That's a matter, there's other expenses. I did do this, a high school sport practice chauffeur.
I too.
There's that, yeah.
They still want to drive my kids around.
Okay, B 10.
Yeah, you want to change the name, is that your idea, David?
Organization of legal statute.
No, Bob.
Got a better name?
District of Awesomeness.
You know, it did remind me, though, did we ever get the logo copyrighted? We were talking about that a couple of years ago, because people were starting to...
They're putting it on their yard signs and stuff.
I don't know if we ever, I don't, I think it was investigated and we didn't pursue it for some reason. Maybe it's, there's like rules if you haven't, if you haven't like protected it forever, then you can't start protecting it after a period of time, maybe? I don't know if that was it, but I know that's a thing.
Since people have already been sort of commandeering it.
Yeah.
On the, I'm sorry to go back, but on the payment thing for new members, you probably have a, like an official form or something that they fill out and sign. On the, um, sorry to go back, but on the, the payment thing for new members, you probably have a, like an official form or something that they fill out and sign and send. Is there one that we have?
To receive it or to waive it?
Well, probably either one.
Receive it, I would.
Yeah.
Either one, yeah, maybe everyone just pulls one out.
Yeah.
If that's how it's written, no?
I don't know. Is there a law, is there?
I think it's an opt-in.
Opt-in, okay.
I thought we went around with that, trying to make it an opt-out, so that.
Yeah, that didn't get anywhere in the large section.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think they have to fill it out every time they request reimbursement.
It's a monthly reimbursement process form.
Oh, okay.
Seriously?
Yeah, because we might not be at the meeting. I can't.
Oh, that's true.
I can't pay you if you didn't go to.
That's true.
You just didn't pay $20.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, gotta make sure they don't break bank on that one.
So what I was accustomed to is the board secretary would hold those, and then she would just slide them in the board folder.
Oh, that's a good one.
Yeah, it's easy.
Yeah, okay. But do we need to put anything in?
I don't. The brand on operations isn't in policy now.
Don't wait six months after the year closes to ask for it.
Okay.
B eleven?
All right, yes, B eleven. Election, which is all pretty, again.
Yep, not determined by us.
So we can't do anything with that.
Was it in the middle also?
Twelve, residency and resignation. I don't think we get to play with that one either. Let's wait.
Eleven point one.
I missed a page. Election, and then eleven point one, residency and resignation.
Not too nitpicky, but actually that paragraph we did change. Uh, the board member's residence changes to a place outside of the board member's director district, but within the school district. That was actually changed by us.
Oh, and there's a more his hers popping up in there.
And then, again, just solve a problem. If they leave, if they move out of the district, then that's a different story, but if made a board member stay in the district and move, and we, that, we were allowed to rewrite that so they could stay on the board until.
Next election.
An next election.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, remainder of the term.
Okay, so we don't need to change it.
But no, we don't need to change it again. We just took that one.
That was a little point.
Could be a conflict, though, and I should read it before I say, if you moved into a director whose election isn't the next cycle, then you've got two people living in the same.
It could happen.
Zone, so that's a what-if.
That would be, because of the zone, does the zone say?
The district.
Yeah, the district stays.
The district determines where our.
The district determines.
Yeah, we could have it at large, determine to that way.
True.
Divide into four pieces applying to five.
One at large.
Or five at large.
We're just gonna assume that this does not happen.
It's possible.
It is good.
Well, it does say here that they can serve until the elec, at time the election be held for that position, so.
So they'd have to be elected really.
Their position would go.
Well, you would have to.
The next election.
Two sitting board members running for the same spot, it's true.
If they wanted to.
If they wanted to.
But technically, they're still representing that director area until the.
Until the election.
Election.
And we all know, we're not representing the director areas, we're representing everybody.
Yeah, it's in here, actually.
That's, yeah.
Okay, eleven two.
Eleven point two.
Oh, look where it is.
Filling board vacancies.
There are fewer than three board members, the ASD board members.
See that? That's how I remembered that, I typed it up. That's rich.
Eleven point two, filling board vacancies. I think that's.
She's doing it.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay, eleven point three, oath of office, also pretty static. B twelve, director district boundaries.
I think this is pretty.
Yeah, yeah.
Census.
Yeah, we just did that.
Yeah, the only reason it would change is if we went from zero to five, yeah.
And that's an option that's spelled out. Okay. Uh, B thirteen, director orientation.
So I did have another one for this, which we've done, it's just not written down, as orientation to board docs, and how to log in, how to do it for meetings. This is how you vote.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that was super helpful.
Okay, so what is it? An extra, another bullet?
Another bullet.
In the top one?
Yep, the first. Oh, or, I guess it doesn't matter, because the top list is what you'll be provided with. It could be instructions on how to use board to.
Yeah, if we probably shouldn't name the software.
Yeah, probably, yes, it changes, right, that's a good point.
Training on documentation access.
So this access line, this third from the bottom, might be a good place to add that in.
Oh, yeah.
Access to board meetings, financial reports, the past year, maybe training on, where to find them, or how to.
Training on, um.
Relevant tools or.
Relevant, yeah. Relevant board meeting tools, we could just call it something big like that.
I'm thinking in a separate bullet, access to board, um, policies and documents. I mean, that's what board docs is, right, and it's.
Well, or it's, no, it's more about the, you're sitting there, and you're going, how to go through the agenda, how to vote.
Right, because we do have a bullet that says board policies and administrative procedures.
Oh, there it is, okay, thank you.
Then maybe add another bullet, just.
Instructions.
Policies and regulations.
Yeah, how to, how to operate board software tools, there we go. That's out.
Okay.
And do we need to add a bullet for, um, accessing compensation? How to access board character compensation? I don't know if we need information about it, but.
Okay, first, for training on how to access board.
Software tools.
Software tools, thank you.
And that should be under administrative procedures.
That is a procedure.
Yeah, so it would, yeah, good point. Remember, the fifth bullet would be included in. Point two.
Yeah.
All right, we're good then.
Do we want to add, um, something in here in, in the event more than one board member? In the event of more than one newly elected or appointed board member, uh, it will, this orientation will involve the whole board, or it will be a, there will be a retreat, or something, rather than it, so that we codify that we want this to be a s, a more systematized, rather than, you know, a one-off event.
It was the deeper training kind of thing, or is it, there's like, you have to book something, and there's an event that happens?
Yes.
Well, you know, I don't, see, this, it would get kind of prescriptive, because again, we'd have to sort through what are, I mean, the meetings with cabinet couldn't be instructive to do as an entire board. Going through, uh, I don't know, something in here, like the sitting board members might not need to do, like going through board docs, I don't know how to vote with board docs. So it wouldn't be necessarily an exhaustive list. So I wondered how to write that in a way where, um, it doesn't get too prescriptive.
It's a good idea, though, because I'm just thinking of, there's a lot of the stuff that, like, I got the box, right, you get the box, and then, so some of this, you don't have any perspective, or, um, you don't have any perspective, and then it would be helpful if other board members said, well, this is what you should look at in this particular, you know, whatever it is.
And then it's helpful for returning board members to know what information you have received, so that we're not like, well, weren't you told that? No, you know, we're told that, oh.
Yeah.
Kind of like if there's a new member, there would be a board retreat for orientation, and then everybody can just, oh, and don't forget this, and oh, I like to do this. I really think it would be a nice way to start off the relationship.
Sure.
So we could say, which shall include in-person meetings with board level staff members, and include a phrase about like, and other sitting board members, or something like that. Just after that, just add in, add in the, the rest of the board somehow, in that, in that phrase. And that way, it can, you know, depending on the situation.
Right, right.
So, does that make sense? So that paragraph towards the bottom, above the four bullets, the end of the first sentence, where it says, which shall include in-person meetings with cabinet-level staff members, insert in there, and other sitting board members. Does that make sense?
Oh. Yeah.
I mean, we could just say, the board and the superintendent will assist each new board member.
Yeah.
At the head of that paragraph.
There, it says the board, and then have a.
Well, see, and that's, that's what's hard to, to put in policy, like, the idea that you should have a board retreat, and yet, you know, again, the whole board doesn't have to watch people figure out how to vote. So how do we include that?
Maybe it's just a, you know, maybe even some of the bottom and top, that there's going to be an orientation, and this is what it's gonna include. Yeah, right, and how do you do it? Maybe the bottom paragraph goes kind of towards the top, or reword it.
Or, or reword the first paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of the board will help, it could be the board will meet with newly elected or appointed directors to understand the policies and procedures.
To assist them and understand.
And just make that more of a push grab thing versus just help.
So, yeah, so get rid of help, make meet with.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I do feel like, when I started, I was given a bunch of stuff, and I had more questions than I started before I got the packet.
So, at the very top, it's the board will meet with newly elected?
Mm-hmm, or appointed.
What was that?
Yeah, and, yeah, or appointed directors, board members.
Directors to understand policies and procedures, and so the first set of bullets is largely policies and procedures.
Well, actually, I would add a little bit more to make, help it make sense, so instead of to understand the policies, I would say to help them understand the policies.
Meet with newly elected, to, fair point. Understanding is a rather amorphous term. To help them understand the policies and procedures of board and administrative policies of the district, so facilitate, will be provided with, yada yada. Any additions to the yada yada, the, the bullets?
We have.
And then that gets us out of having to sit and watch how to make the computer program work.
Right, so, yeah, we'll figure out how to structure that.
And so do we.
Well, because we're working on policies and procedures, not fingerprinting and acquiring or.
And so do we want the board and the superintendent will assist each new board member at the bottom?
No.
Okay, so president or designate.
Yeah, I think that's good. I think it's, it's customary for the president superintendent to kind of run point and answer and questions.
Okay. And then we have one sentence on the back that honestly seems out of place. Board members will be encouraged to attend meetings, workshops, and conferences to increase their knowledge and competencies. Isn't that in one of our general board member responsibilities?
I think this was getting at annual conference in the.
Yeah.
Board, uh, in board, wherever that's in.
Absolutely.
New board member orientation.
The board, the board.
Board can, I think.
Okay.
Um, that, that's getting at that idea.
Okay.
Or like if coming to school visits and.
Yeah, yeah. Do we want to say new board members? I mean, that's what this policy is about.
We can say new board members, I think that would be.
I mean, everybody's encouraged, but I think everybody being encouraged is captured elsewhere, too. My handwriting is faster than my keyboard here. Okay. So, B fourteen, development, adoption, amendment, and suspension of board policies. Got a note here that says, reference to the superintendent administrative policies monitored by the superintendent. Just that it's in here? This is the one, the administrative policies, this is the ones that we're in the middle of right now?
Yep.
Anything on fourteen?
I think so.
Going, okay. B fifteen, board engagement with the community. Wondering if we need to expand this at all, given the work that we have ahead of us, and the fact that conversations with the board isn't in here, isn't mentioned in here.
I think that's appropriate, though.
Yeah?
Right, so, because the, the tactics we use might change over time.
Sure, okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, it's pretty, pretty thorough, I think.
Except the top doesn't include anything about students, student needs, right, we're talking about trying to understand student needs better.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, so we could just edit the first bullet, maybe.
And here's where we switch between the global community versus the.
Right.
Specifically students, or specifically staff, or.
Well, this is about community engagement, so this, that would, it might be okay, this is lowercase c, community.
Just in, in the bottom, engagement opportunities, uh, fourth bullet down, are structured to create meaningful to it communication about student learning and achievement.
True.
But we also want to get student feedback.
It is in here, in the third bullet in the top section, seek to find out to opportunities to collaborate with community members and connect students, families, and staff. So students are in there, staff, community members, so that.
Okay.
Families, that covers everything, which is good.
I mean, I guess I don't know that we need a separate standalone.
That's true, we might not need any tweaks, yeah.
Other thoughts?
I'm okay with it, SS.
Okay. All right, these, we're getting there. These are done. So next up is the Rs, um, which is our board slash superintendent roles. Something we are all getting much, much better about delineating. Um, first up, global board superintendent roles are one.
It's pretty global.
Yeah, it's pretty, you know, a lot of this, again, is, uh, well-defined already. Going, going. R two, unity of control.
AKA, board stay in your vein.
Well, close, close effective working relationship. That we act and have authority only as a body.
Surprisingly, isn't it?
Yeah.
So.
Play a piece of history there.
Okay. R three, accountability of the superintendent. Again, pretty straightforward, I think. We, superintendent Tully is the board's only link to the operational organization. Swim lanes.
Swim lanes.
Great. R four, delegation to the superintendent and board support of the superintendent.
This kind of outlines how policy governance works.
Yeah, exactly. R five, monitoring superintendent performance. I think we have pretty well spelled out. There's a parameters and goals. Okay, five point one, superintendent performance assessments, which is basically the forms that we fill out for each assessment, for monitoring reports. R six, superintendent role expectations. Again, pretty straightforward. Again, pretty straightforward. His role is his role. Their role is their role. R seven, superintendent compensation approach, which I think describes what we have done. Why do I have R one again? I must have forgotten to take out my old ones.
There we go.
Okay, that is it for the Vs and Rs. Thank you all, and Peggy, I will send you my notes. We'll go from there.
I'm gonna take a quick break.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right.
Just the student handbook in there for something to discuss?
I asked for a new one because it was tapped into my binder and the last one I had in it was like two thousand twenty.
I see.
Director Cass, there was a comment today when you were leaving cabinet about just moving the create a sustainable funding system to the top. Because of. How we were going to go about.
Well, let's talk about that because that was, that was something we had, we had talked about as a board, how to order it. So I was following the last board conversation, but you could go right to like both ways for sure.
And we just said that we would.
Yeah.
Bring it forward again when cabinet asked about it, about how we kind of.
Sounds good.
Move through time.
It might have been a desire, this soft pedal a little bit, but yeah, no, let's talk about it for sure.
It's on there, it's on the front page.
Anyway, yeah, no, we'll be talking about it. Curious about cabinet's feedback on it, about anything else, but we can wait for everyone to hear, I guess.
It was just a question.
No, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it does usually imply priority, right?
Yeah.
Things are listed.
Yeah.
Understandable. There's the calendar. Look at this, nineteen twenty, I'm not very good at keeping my binder updated. I am not sandy.
Evidently, you never know when you need those older documents.
Right, it's kind of interesting. About four times. And the four times. Not much different, though. You should have it in here. Maybe got mixed in.
Okay.
Oh, I may have.
A super notebook.
It's not punched.
Is it not punched?
It's not punched.
It's not punched.
Sure is it under your roles and responsibilities?
Oh, somewhere near the back of the folder, yeah.
Good eye.
Thank you.
Nice try.
A single pager.
Something white and black and blue.
Okay. Sorry about that. Next up is legislative priorities. So we have in front of us the latest draft of our legislative priorities. Director Cass, our legislative representative, do you want to lead this off?
This is the result of board feedback and I asked Director Hayes for input as well, just as a thought partner to work through how to best tweak these and balance just enough context without making it too long and yet getting to the point. W Superintendent Burge was really fundamental to, actually, in helping us get this format and helping it, again, get it straight into the point. And she actually just mentioned some feedback cabinet was taking a look at it, some feedback. It is an interesting question on how to order them. So we had talked about, okay, which ones do we want to be first? That might be something to talk about today, or if there's any language adjustments we identify and we can tweak this. No, through all our legislative meetings, no one has seen this. We just use the draft as talking points, so we can still edit it.
I really like the layout.
It's beautiful, yeah.
It's really clean and easy to kind of follow.
Like North Shore Blue, yeah.
Yeah, any thoughts?
Starting at the top?
Sure.
I would maybe, I know, I know where you're going with the heat pump thing, right, for air conditioning? So I would, it might be a little more descriptive than just heat pumps.
Oh, something more general?
Some people might not even know what they are. And then, yeah, maybe something of, just addressing, yeah.
What is this?
With climate, you know, something that has to do with, you know, obviously, we're talking about climate change and changing temperatures and. Because what, from my commercial real estate.
Yeah.
Experience, you can't just put heat pumps in buildings. Now, with the change of the code, like every school, we air condition, we have to, we'd have to replace, we'd have to replace the roof. Or insulate underneath the roof. They won't, the county won't like put air conditioning in commercial buildings. I don't know if educational facilities count as commercial buildings, so maybe you can't.
So then we have insulation, so it's inefficient, is there?
Yeah, there's like, like in a commercial office building or industrial building, you have to go like R fifty-six insulation, which is.
Geez.
Really?
To even put air conditioning in, so, because it's a, it's, yeah, because you're wasting all, so you're defeating the purpose, right? You can air condition it, but most of it goes out of this building, so.
Right.
Through the roof.
So maybe something that's more comprehensive about.
Like other.
I don't know, it doesn't have to be intensive or anything, it just can be.
Air conditioning.
Providing air conditioning to, yeah.
Right, yeah, I'm wondering if we need to say.
Providing the capital.
Just go right to the.
And cooling systems, how about cooling systems?
Yeah, I think cooling systems would just cover it.
What is the, there's a term, there's a specific term for the mechanism, let me have it.
The geothermal?
Geothermal, thank you.
But we might.
But do we want to get that kind of detail?
Cooling systems might work, because really, that's the issue. We're worried about, we're worried about cooling.
That's the talking point, right? Take back East, they couldn't open schools because it was too hot.
That's right.
Something that's used.
Yep.
Yeah, and building cooling systems, how's that sound?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cooling system, perfect.
Right.
Do we want to say district saves grant opportunities, including but not limited to?
So maybe solar power, you're saying add something else?
Or just something more general.
It's under climate change, right?
Yeah, that, that, we seek the grant opportunities in these things, but it's not limited to those things.
How about in areas such as?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I see we're seeking grant opportunities to expand in areas such as.
Or just in areas, grant opportunities in areas such as, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want it limited to grant opportunities, or you want to just put funding? Because they're like, oh yeah, go play for all the grants you want. Good luck.
It's kind of a good point.
We can say funding opportunities.
Yes.
Yeah. And is it, you know, we have a need to respond to climate change? Or are we going to the legislature saying we need for them to provide opportunities where we can respond?
Well, see, and this, this is the art and the science. Really, if it's a legislative priority, we need them to do something. Right? Right? And so the context is we're seeking funding opportunities for these things.
And it alerts them that if they're going to issue statements like all vehicles will be electric by twenty thirty-five, does that include school buses, right? That, you know, you got to remember, we're part of the system and we're a huge part of the system. So if you're going to announce all buildings need solar panels by a certain date, right, don't forget.
Our goals.
Statements to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Second one's pretty straightforward. I really love calling out that one of seven. Did that go downs? Wasn't it eight last year?
I don't know.
Eight states?
I pulled this up not long ago and there's a number of states, and it might be seven, that are sixty, and there's one that's higher. There's one that's lower.
Really?
But everybody's at fifty except for something like seven or eight.
Do you remember who the higher one was?
Something like New Jersey was in there. I think it was New Jersey, but it was, I remember Missouri, New Jersey, maybe Oklahoma, Washington, there was just a handful that were.
Very competent.
About fifty percent.
And it still doesn't mean that those communities can afford necessarily pay for it, but at least that way they could get the assistance. If they can get it built, then they can get the assistance.
Yeah, what about the next category?
Love this one.
Were there any unfunded mandates that are, that come up earlier or was recommended removing or either funded or removed?
There is not, there is not, just in general, any unfunded mandate WASDA is con.
Yeah.
Right, even if, they'll come and say, this is a good policy, but without funding, we can't really be pros. That's what they'll do a lot of times. They'll always call out an unfunded mandate, even if they like the policy.
I was thinking of stuff that did go through.
Here's the.
Oh, look at you.
Fifty percent.
Oh, it's Kentucky that has the sixty-six point seven.
Kentucky, and then Missouri is at fifty-seven point one.
I know.
Wow, that's amazing.
Where they came up with that.
No, so we're one of eight at sixty percent, it looks like, based off this list.
And one of ten that are not fifty percent. So eighty percent of the country.
Still requires sixty percent, so yeah.
Make this and make it eight.
Okay. That's the latest.
That's why I'm getting solid. It's accurate.
Yeah. It is accurate.
All right, so yeah, so anything under the student, the innovation, student growth?
I like this.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay, funding.
Yeah. Do we, I know it's been in there before, but do we need to call out that this backfill that we're talking about is backfilling what the state is not providing for basic education?
Well. Yeah, how would, I mean, I think that's in there without the phrase basic education, right? We could think of a way.
When we're talking about funding special education, that's.
Yeah, so that's.
I think that that's where the sticking point is, the thinking of the special education as opposed to basic education.
Right, because on the back, there's more. Let's continue, right, and so I just, like, we're going to need an arrow something on the box. We won't turn it over. So there's more on the back, right, so.
Yeah. I just have a math question. Is our levy forty-eight million a year? I thought it was higher than that.
Oh, yeah, so it is higher. It's fifty-something. So the fifty percent was the combination of ELL services shortfall and special education services shortfall. So that adds up to be, question mark, how do you think, probably thirty?
Yeah, because I thought our annual, or, yeah, our annual levy question was supposed to be sixty million.
Good catch. Yeah, good catch.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Got a really good question from Representative Springer on why deans of students can't do what assistant principals do. Yeah, when you weren't, when you weren't able to.
Deans of students can't evaluate stuff.
Right. So we. Right, can't evaluate, right, they can't do the instructional.
Right.
Yeah, but it was, I mean, it was, it was a good question, right, like, it was why we were talking about, yeah.
And this, no way needs to be in here because this is going to be way too long-winded, but the next time you meet with someone and we're talking about special ed costs and the need for assistant principals, IEPs require an administrator to attend them. So if you've got.
So between TPAP.
TPAP.
IEPs.
Right.
Right, that's why you need to certificate it.
Right, so just to do some, you know, back in the neck and math at a middle school, they've got seven hundred kids, fifteen percent of them are on IEPs. That's, you know.
There's a lot of means.
Sixty, IEP means that they have to do every year at the beginning of the school year. They typically are two to three hour long.
Right.
So, yeah.
There you go.
So, just, yeah.
Do we, do we also need to make a connection with the fact that our high schools are overflowing? I mean, there are so many students. Just a single principal would not cut it.
I mean, the prototypical model puts principals in a singular category and it kind of is inclusive of APs or is thought to be including APs. What we're saying is we need a specific allocation that's a little bit more thoughtful, that talks about what assistant principals do and have a separately pulled out allocation for them.
Question about that first bullet on the back page, with respect to the lag behind our local labor markets and inflationary reality. Is it also lagging behind the state as a whole, labor market, inflationary reality?
The idea is that the funding they're giving us is not keeping up with inflation in North King County. So the, um. Yeah, so it's the funding allocation they've set aside for classified employees, you know. Because I think historically, fortunately if I'm wrong, it's thought of as kind of a minimum wage sometimes kind of thing by too many legislators. Right, don't really appreciate either the competitive nature of the labor market or the skills required for a lot of classified, classified employees, so. I mean, not every single classified employee has thought of that, but I think a lot of them legislators think it's kind of the minimum wage kind of thing. Okay, good. There is a little social justice aspect to it, too.
Looks crazy.
Okay, so order.
Order, order of priority, yeah.
I like having the climate at the top. I think it's probably the most pressing thing that has to be dealt with, and I think it's on the students' minds as well.
And it's a ask that isn't about us asking for more money, right? It's also in alignment with what our current legislature seems to be very focused on, so.
Yeah, something new.
Little, okay.
Sad, but true.
What would we want second?
Create conditions that remove barriers.
That's kind of a segue into?
Mm-hmm, and then it segues very nicely into special ed.
And then put.
Have a barrier of sixty percent.
Simple majority last?
Yeah.
Sure.
That's the greatest hits.
That's how we start every time, like, sorry, gotta say it. No, didn't get as much pushback on that one this time around, actually.
That's some support.
Gosh, yeah.
People are, they democracy.
I know, like, usually we get the, it's not politically expedient thing, but you're not about that.
We need to have that list of the other states that are, that we're in company with, I think.
We're kind of a little island out here. It's usually not a selling point that everybody else is doing it.
All right, well, great, so I'll forward these on, these changes on, and we'll be ready to, we can put it on, typically, we don't vote on this. Put it on under board reports and communication. Put it on under board reports and communication, just get a head nod, and then we can send it out to the legislators. Along that line, hopefully this isn't a crazy idea, because I thought of how this could be a crazy idea. How, I thought, we communicate with our legislators a lot, which is great, but I was thinking something that might get their attention is a thank you in crayon from a young person for your support. I don't know that, you know, it could, it could be read a lot of ways, and so I understand that that's not necessarily possible. But honestly, they would stick it up on their wall, they got a thank you in crayon?
We can't
I don't think so.
Ask, but we can talk to our PTAs and see if PTAs can get a PTA member's child to
I can ask Tara in Hollywood. Okay, I'll do that, that probably would be simpler, and then I'll make a eight and a half by eleven and we'll just Okay, send a thank you along with the printout, and, okay. Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Just going to comment on your comment about being an island, Washington's one of three states west of the Mississippi, at sixty percent.
We were taught in law school, don't make the argument all the other states are doing it in print for an article, nowhere.
It's undemocratic, that's what you have to do.
Yeah.
Well, you know what it was changed, it wasn't an original. We originally, all of ours were fifty percent when the state constitution was written, this got changed during World War Two. They claim it had something to do with farmers. The thinking is it was because all the men were off at war and they didn't want the women willy-nilly raising taxes.
On their paychecks.
That's right.
So the constitution gets changed, it's in the constitution, right?
Yeah, that's what it got changed, it was like nineteen forty-three.
So they can't get it passed, is it takes that super majority, right? And, oh.
Be an interesting suit, or whether it's, whether it's legal, even if it's in the constitution.
Then it's sixty percent.
Yeah, and when it was originally written in eighteen eighty, whatever, it was fifty percent, it got changed in nineteen forty-three to sixty percent.
So we can couch it as fixing the constitution. Maybe
Farmers' rights.
You could argue, write an article about that.
Yeah.
It's a good op-ed.
All right, well, it's five after seven, we have gone through the topics that we have on our agenda.
Excellent.
We could talk about a lot more. I don't know that we have time to go through anything else, but remember we need study session topics to fill in a few places.
Didn't see all the budget work sessions on there, that, that is on
It's on there.
Well, is it on for October twenty-third, I think he said it wasn't.
Or September?
Or no, September twenty-sixth, still twenty-third.
Okay.
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe that's when I did, maybe we push it to then.
Do you want one in between?
Well, I think on my schedule, I had it on October twenty-third, let me see, I might just need to fix it on my slide then, so it on, okay. All right, well, we can make it work however.
So just to
I can make it be the November thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And then
So Joan, does that move you up or back if you go to November thirteenth?
It's back a little bit, right? At the end of October, we would report out final enrollment, so we'll just do it at the November thirteenth, and then I had November twenty-seven, which I think we probably just strike at that point, we can't, having one two weeks apart probably helpful unless we can agree to, so, we'll, we'll discuss it when we have the work session, you guys can decide who you, how many want to know.
Director Hayes?
Yeah, just to clarify, so I want to make sure I'm seeing what I'm, think I'm seeing clearly in my brain. October ninth is blank, April twenty-second, May thirteenth, June tenth, and July eighth, is that what I, those are
We filled it, you didn't?
Um, May thirteenth.
So I'm proposing a work session, a budget work session if we needed one on May thirteenth.
Okay.
So one of those, I would like to talk about conversations with the board, how, how we do our outreach.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, pros and cons to when, I mean, we're going to do, we're going to do it as it is, but at some point we should sit down and and really think about how to do this.
And just in case, I asked for one on special education in March, just because such a con luded, just a study session.
Oh, for education, oh, an educational
Oh, study session.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is, there's the eleventh.
Yes, March eleventh.
Yeah, and then just, they get filled up, things happen, and then all of a sudden you need a study session to
Yeah.
We did, we did add a study session on January eighth about the Student Wellness and Safety Task Force work that was requested last week when we were
Right, so much of the stress about filling out all those ones in late spring of next year, at this point?
Spring, right.
It is spring in North Shore, and that has a history of producing topics that you do.
Yes, like, last time I looked at the version of this, there were more on page two that were open, that have not been filled in.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah, and new board members are going to have things they need.
Yeah.
Studies they have on.
And then the only other thing I'd just throw out there are the targets, the draft of targets from our board self-assessment and goals discussion.
But, you know, just after this last meeting, we never got notes from Tricia from the board retreat, that's the disconnect.
Okay.
So Peggy's going to ask again.
Okay.
I asked, and Peggy's going to ask, so then I think that's when we can really talk about, we'll bring out all the details together, and then we'll be ready to really try to fill in some squares in terms of how we're doing what.
Yeah, so we talked at the meeting about the policy review, and so the fact that it's been six years, I thought it was very helpful when we sat down and worked through all of these policies.
Yeah.
And it has been a long time, and I think that it is appropriate to get back together and run through them, like we did tonight with the Bs and Rs with the fourteen parameters. With respects to the new board members, I think it would be very helpful for them to be part of that. To one extent, if it can happen after the election, then it's a finite group versus asking two individuals to come in that may or may not be doing the work, so I, that's up to people to decide what's the right balance. But I also think if Bob and I are involved, there's also benefit too of having five people with experience, two new people, just to help kind of run through things. But I do think more than anything, the new board members, it'd be great to read all those, because that was helpful for all of us.
And if we're only doing it once every five years or so, that might make some sense, wait until after the beginning of the year. And I would say not doing them all at once, I think the parameters will take a lot longer.
Yeah.
We'll have to do them like four or five at a time, tops, right?
Well, I was just saying, do we really only want to do them once every five years?
Well, it's, again, theoretically, but yeah, it's like the, the piecemeal versus the global look, right? So we still have opportunities, of course, to adjust them, but
We could do what we did six years ago, where we pick a couple to do this fall with experienced board members.
That is what we did.
And then save the others for new board members.
Good idea.
That's a good idea.
Because it is a lot to try and take on, I look back and we did several study sessions.
It was
Yeah, I think we could only do two or three at a time, now they're already written, so that will help.
True.
That was a process, writing all those policies, but, yeah, no, it's true, so let's think about that, so maybe in October
Give an October night study session open.
October ninth.
Yeah, and let's think about which, we can be surgical about which ones to do on that one, maybe if everyone wants to think about that.
Yeah.
We could bring that up next board meeting, which ones to review in October.
So do we want to put that tentative as a topic of that study session? Cool.
Great.
The fact that we've changed so little in so many years, I think speaks to
Yeah, it does serve us well. And, right, a couple needles, needles we need to move.
Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly.
Some sooner than later, but
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Good stuff.
Let's go home and have dinner? Or not? Okay.
Thanks, everyone.